Everybody ready at 5:30? I'd like to call our November 19th meeting to order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Oh, roll call.
Sit back down.
A little out of sync since we're missing a board member.
Exercise.
Okay, please call.
Mrs. Segwin?
Here.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Here.
Mr. Gabhart?
Here.
Mr. Hauser? Not yet. Mr. Parker?
Here.
Okay, now all rise for our pledge of allegiance, sorry about that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, welcome. I'm going to introduce our board members. To my far right, we have Mr. Brent Parker. To my immediate right, we have Mr. Mike Gabhart. To my left, we have Mrs. Annie Karstoffen. Our superintendent, Mrs. Anne Sloss. And our treasurer, Colleen Abhol. And my name is Elaine Segwin. All right, so it looks like we have an exciting board recognition tonight. Eighth grade football championship team. Who's going to be introduced by Mr. Sworka?
Yes, Matt Sworka, the middle school athletic director. You can grab it right off of that if you want. Yeah. Sorry, you would make it there faster than I would. You could just take it out of the holder. Sorry. Leave it in the holder.
All right, can you guys hear me fine? All right, so thank you guys for coming. I know everybody's here to talk about our SWC championship team. I appreciate the support. I'm going to introduce two of our coaches. And then we have a couple of players that we're going to introduce. I know this time of the year is kind of tough for our kids because some have basketball training, some have other sports that they have to go to. So we have a handful of kids here. But to start, I want to say a few things about our coaches. I watched our coaches take this group from start of seventh grade to the end of eighth grade. And our kids made tremendous growth throughout the last two years. That's a group that has come together. I know start of seventh grade, kind of a little shaky to start. But we, at the end of the seventh grade season, we really made a lot of growth. And then this year, finished with a record of seven, zero, and one. So to introduce two coaches. Brett Bechtel and Jacob Hammond.
Wait, I think there's some more that just walked in. All right, Sean?
Sean Coghlan. Sean also coaches basketball for us, so he was coming here right after practice.
Well, sorry. First of all, I thank the board for having us this evening. Thank Mr. Sworka. I really want to thank him the last two years. He's put a lot of time and effort into making sure that this program can get, you know, built from the ground up. You know, I know we haven't had a lot of success on Friday nights, but the talent is there. It is coming, so just be patient with it. Just give it some time. And, you know, he meets, we, football is a very, very demanding sport in terms of all the equipment and, you know, stuff that we need. So he does a great job of making sure that we have what we need to make our kids as successful as possible. As he said, you know, started with this group, seventh grade. You know, last year, we went six and two. We won our last five straight games. You know, didn't lose it all this year, so it was just a really good way, you know, to show that the program's there. I also want to thank Coach Hammond. You know, initially, he went into this year being a seventh grade coach. And then we had some guys drop out and like, I, you have got to help me. I need somebody else with me. And he stepped in, took over our defense. And the last four games, our defense gave out one touchdown. So like, we were really, you know, really, yeah. And then, you know, halfway through the year with Coach Coghlan, I, you know, kind of joked that like, when, once he came in, we, our defense like, didn't give up any yards. Because Coach Hammond and I could really focus on that and he could run the scout team. So that was a big part. You know, with our team, you know, we really preached a lot of, you know, just basic things, you know, whether it's from fundamentals, doing the same drills every single day, you know, to get the kids, you know, having that routine. And then really preaching that team, like when Mr. Sworka was saying, like, they really came together, you know, really liked, you know, acted like a family by the end of that eighth grade year, which is what you need for a successful football program. So with that being said, turn it back over to Mr. Sworka and introduce the players that were able to attend.
So starting us off, Landon Cross. Landon, you're going to come up here. Zaden Gossett. Jesse Lear. Avery McKenna. Spencer Scott. Did we have any other football players come in last second?
Good job.
Good job.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Eddie Jones.
Congratulations, Eddie.
I think we had some coming behind wins this year, so it makes sense, second half. Let's go.
Congratulations.
Dry hair. Mr. Keefe, anybody else coming down?
All right.
All right, well, thank you guys for taking time. I do want to just give these kids another round of applause for all their hard work. All right, so players, we're going to go out in that hallway and down the hall. If you guys just wait for us in the hallway, we'll show you where to go. And then, school board, thank you guys for taking time to acknowledge your students.
For the board. And Mary Sane. We have your copy of this.
Thank you.
That's exciting. Maybe that's our pipeline, right? So that's exciting.
Yes, very exciting.
Yeah. Okay, moving along.
Thanks, Amy, I'll do it. Thanks.
Visitor's comments?
I think there was one.
Yeah, we do have one. I'll just, I'll just briefly touch on visitor comments. The school board encourages and appreciates citizen interest in meetings of the Board of Education. Normally, the board meets twice during the month and will make accommodations to allow public participation. Persons wishing to address the board up to five minutes may place their name on a sign-in sheet at least five minutes prior to the start of the meeting, indicating the topic they wish to address, or make a written request to the treasurer's office one week in advance of the board meeting to speak for up to 10 minutes. Each meeting participant will be invited to speak directly to the board, so their remarks may be clearly heard and questions may be asked. So that's good, I'll move forward. So we do have one speaker today. Ms. Linda, I'm going to try to pronounce it right. Aganaga? Agan, okay. Teacher at Northwood Middle School.
President Segwin, members of the board, Superintendent Cross, Director Abhol.
Can you tap it?
Is it on?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Is the light on?
I don't think it's on.
How about now?
Yeah, there we go.
My name is Linda Aganyaga, the president of the Alaria Education Association. And I'm here on behalf of more than nearly 500 certified educators who serve the students and families of our district every day. EEA leadership recently met with the superintendent, treasurer, and district administration to discuss the serious financial situation Alaria City Schools is now facing after the failure of issue 17 on November 4th. We understand the gravity of the moment. We understand the financial pressures created by state and county funding instability. And we understand the obligation this board carries in ensuring the financial health of our district. But we also understand the human impact of the choices before you. The district has present, is preparing to present options for nine hundred, I'm sorry, $9 million in cuts, the deepest cuts in more than three decades. We have heard clearly that 80% of the budget is tied to personnel. And we know what that means. Our teachers, counselors, specialists, intervention staff, nurses, and support professionals are at risk. We have already seen four administrative positions eliminated since May and eight certified retirements submitted. We know additional retirements and resignations will continue to come in the months ahead. Tonight, the Alaria Education Association asks firmly and respectfully that before any recommendation involving staff cuts is considered or approved, this board joins us in advocating aggressively at the state level for fair, reliable school funding. Alaria's situation is not the result of irresponsible spending or mismanagement. It is the result of a funding system that places districts like ours in repeated cycles of crisis. Cycles that force communities back to the ballot, force districts to contemplate devastating reductions, and force employees to brace for the possibility of losing their livelihoods. These cycles are unsustainable, demoralizing, and harmful to students. We do not want to see any staff cuts. Not one. Our educators are already stretched thin. We consistently do more with less, larger class sizes, increasing student needs, escalating behavioral and mental health demands, and growing state mandates. Cutting staff will not only harm programs and services, it will directly harm the children of Alaria. We have lived through this before. The devastation from 2008 cuts still lives in the memory of this district, and we cannot afford to repeat that history. We ask the board to number one, advocate publicly and persistently with our state legislators for a funding system that does not put the weight of district solvency on the backs of employees and families. Number two, communicate clearly to the community and to lawmakers that the cuts under consideration are driven not by choice, but by a state model that continues to fail districts like Alaria. Number three, exhaust every possible alternative, including retirements, attrition, restructuring, and long-range financial planning before considering reductions in force. Number four, center transparency and collaboration with staff as decisions approach. The lives and careers of real people hang in the balance. We appreciate the superintendent's commitment to avoiding fear-based communication and her openness about the challenges ahead. We also appreciate that final decisions will not be made tonight. But as you begin this next phase of deliberation, we need you to know that the EEA stands firmly against personnel cuts. We ask you to join us in bringing that unified message to Columbus. Stop forcing communities to choose between solvency and stability for students. Alaria's educators show up for this district every day. We ask that our district show up for us now and fight alongside us for the fair and fully funded schools our students deserve. Thank you.
That was excellent.
Thank you, Linda.
Very good.
He needs to pass them down to the end. Just keep passing them down, yeah. Sorry, I failed at the one thing I used to be good at as a teacher, is passing out papers. I forgot. Need one more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Moving along, we do have a presentation. The treasurer and the superintendent are going to present now.
Thank you, President Segwin. Thank you, Linda. This is not a great time for public ed, as we all know, and, and your words mean a lot. It's never easy. This is year 34 for me, and I've lived through this before, as some of the board members have as well, and some of you. It is never, ever our intention to reduce staff. We know that each of you, no matter your role, touch our kids daily and our families. And that's the last thing we want to do. I think Linda hit it on the head that this is a, a problem in Columbus, and unfortunately, a bit local now, but a problem in Columbus that needs to be fixed. Just in the last year, the superintendents in Lorain County have set, sent multiple correspondence, and we meet monthly with the legislators. They know where we stand, and we will continue to advocate firmly with them. This is an issue with public education funding, period. So, thank you again, Linda. And we'll start off this presentation, the last thing, the one thing they always told us is, don't read to someone. But I really, truly believe I need to read the first few slides because I don't want to paraphrase and not hit every point that's in the slide. So I apologize, that's not usually what we do, but I'm going to read the first few slides to you. First of all, the executive summary of this presentation. The Alaria City School District is facing significant financial challenges following the failure of two levy issues in 2025, and due to the continued reductions in state, federal, and now local funding sources. The levy requests, if approved, would have generated approximately $6 million over a 10-year period, stabilizing the district's finances and allowing the district to preserve its current services for more than 6,000 students that it serves daily. The loss of federal, state, and local lost revenue and recent losses at the polls now forces the district to take immediate action, ultimately reducing about $9 million in 2026, '27 to, to maintain financial stability. These decisions will be deeply difficult, but necessary to ensure that the Alaria schools remain solvent and able to provide essential educational services to students. We approach this work with compassion and integrity, guided by our longstanding commitment to protecting the learning environment for students, maintaining the equitable access to programs and services, and being transparent and accountable stewards of public funds. The financial context. Alaria schools relies on a combination of state, federal, and local revenues to fund school operations. Over the past several years, the district has experienced reductions in all three areas. State funding has not kept pace with inflation, salary obligations, or the rising cost of special education and student services. Homeowners now carry 67.5% of the prop, school property taxes, which is up from 46% years ago. The state has yet to update the inputs to the fair school funding formula to ensure schools are fully funded at the current expense levels. Federal funding, particularly pandemic-related relief, which we all knew as SER funding, right? They, and other one-time funds, have expired, leaving gaps that must now be absorbed by our general fund. The pandemic may be over, but the challenges it created have not disappeared. Our district still faces significant need, yet funds that supported these services are no longer available. Local revenues. Failure of the two levy attempts in May and November 2025, and following the county, county's decision to double the homestead exemption, which led to an unexpected loss, I'll say on October 11th, of an additional $1.5 million a year for Alaria City Schools. Expenditure obligations such as staffing, transportation, and utilities continue to rise, while revenue remains unpredictable. Systemic funding challenges. It is important to recognize that these financial pressures are not unique to the Alaria City Schools. Across the, across the state, school districts are grappling with an over-reliance on local property taxes to fund essential educational services. This is a statewide problem that cannot be solved at the district level without significant legislative and state-level funding reform. School districts must operate within the current system, which limits local flexibility even when costs continue to grow. The Alaria Schools has a long history of sound fiscal management and has consistently been recognized for transparency, efficiency, and accountability in financial reporting. Prior to the current funding losses, the district maintained balanced budgets and prudent reserves in accordance with state and board policy. Before the district's unsuccessful levies in 2025, it had not pursued new operating funds for over 15 years due to sound financial management. And if I could add in there, the typical cycle is three to five years for new money. This plan reflects the district's continued commitment to responsible financial stewardship, even amid unprecedented funding challenges beyond our control. Last one I'm reading to you, I promise. Impact of reductions. The most difficult part of this process is recognizing the impact on our staff, students, and community. These reductions will affect dedicated professionals who contribute daily to our student success, and they will directly impact student, student learning and the school environment. These changes are not performance-based. They are a result, are, excuse me, are a direct result of lost funding, failed levies in 2025, and systemic challenges beyond our district's control. The district is committed to providing clear communication and transition timelines to help ease uncertainty for impacted staff and to keep our school community and the broader public well-informed. We are deeply thankful for the professionalism, compassion, and resilience of our staff during this difficult time. We know that these reductions will touch everyone, staff, students, family, and our community. Moving forward, the district will remain focused on providing quality educational experiences for its students, even as we continue to navigate these unprecedented school funding challenges.
All right, thank you. All right, I am going to explain why are we here and how did we get here, and to help explain why the previous 4.9 mil emergency levy is no longer sufficient, if and when the right time to put on a levy on the ballot. Even with reducing the $9 million, there will still be a need for new operating money or additional reductions in the future. And I'll be outlining the financial pressures that are affecting the district, including House Bill 96 and the state legislation and emergency levies. These take into consideration when making the decision on how much to place onto the ballot. When a school district asks for a levy and it fails, the district still has the same rising costs, like salary, utilities, transportation, and special education. These costs don't stop just because the levy did not pass. In fact, they usually go up every year. By the time the district comes back the next year, the district now must add another year of inflation and increase operating costs, and reserves are reduced, and they need to reestablish a cash balance in order to maintain the district's financial stability and credit strength. I don't believe that we would be going out for any bond issue anytime soon, but it's very important to have a high credit strength and a high financial indicator, according to the auditor's date, because even if you don't have to go for a bond, you do want to refinance some of the bonds like we did two and a half years ago. We refinanced it and saved the, the community over a million dollars. Rebuilding financial stability. The first levy would have let the district keep up. Once it failed, the district fell behind, and now it takes more mils just to get back on track. Because of this, the original 4.9 mils no longer covers what is needed, and the gap has grown. To catch up and stay financially stable, the amount needed becomes higher. Another factor that happened is when I first presented my forecast in September to, I presented it September 17th, got it approved and sent it over to ODE. And October 11th, the governor's budget let the county commissioners do a piggyback on their homestead and, home center rollback and owner-occupied tax relief. They were allowed to double it. So what that happened with the school district's revenue is that we had to forego $1.5 million. So my first forecast in September that was presented, our third year, we were still in the black. We only had about 42 days of cash. But then when you, after the commissioners did their update, we are now in the third year in the red. And according to ODE, we are in fiscal oversight status, being the third year negative. You may.
All right, just, we may piggyback a little bit ourselves. But what that, the state reimburses the single homestead. That has always been in, but in the House Bill 96, the governor allowed them to double that, but we would still only get the single reimbursement. So that's the 1.5 million.
Correct, and it's 1.5 million every year. So, and we are, that's on a calendar year, we are based on a fiscal year. But if you look at it in the next four years, it's a lost revenue of over $5 million. All right, the other one, I might get into the weeds, but I think it's very important to, to stress this. We originally had an emergency levy that was on the ballot. So when a district is on the 20-mil floor, the tax law in Ohio frees certain millage, so that the district can't go below the 20 mils. Because of this, even if property values increase, the district does not automatically get more money from the 20 mils. Any new fixed-mil levy placed on the top of the floor can still be reduced and rolled back under the Ohio tax law when value rises. This makes the fixed-millage levy unpredictable, and the district may not get the revenue that it is expected. So we re-originally put on an emergency levy because a fixed-mil would not be beneficial for a district on the 20-mil floor. Yes, so on my next slide, the state legislators took away districts' ability to place an emergency levy on the ballot. So we are no longer allowed to put an emergency levy on the ballot. An emergency levy asks voters to approve a specific dollar amount. In our case, there was 6.4 million rather than a mil. No property, I'm sorry, no matter what happens to the property values, the district receives the same dollar amount, revenue is stable, and budget planning is more accurate. When a district is at the 20-mil floor, a fixed-mil levy does not reliably increase funding. A fixed-sum emergency levy guarantees a stable amount of money each year, which makes it safer and a smarter option. So when the option to go back onto the ballot, we are no longer allowed to do emergency. We would have to do a fixed-mil levy, so we would have to increase the millage to offset the reduction factor. The next slide I have in here is, it's an eternal update of the forecast. If we do not go on the ballot, if there's no new money coming in, it shows into consideration the county commissioners cut and the $9 million of savings of cuts. You would see in fiscal year '27 that we will have about a 26% cash balance, which is not the recommended 30%, but it gets the district out of fiscal oversight. So $9 million in reduction does not negate the need for additional money in the future, so either a new levy or deeper reductions. So what happens without any new money? Continued cuts in programming and staffing over and above the $9 million that will be reduced. Increased likelihood of state oversight and fiscal warning statuses, where the state will come in and then determine what needs to go. And then, as it was mentioned last year, and even during this year, during the levy cycles, the district must cut its budget by up to $9 million if the levy in May and November fails to pass, which unfortunately they did. With additional financial challenges at hand, the district will now need to implement these cuts and further decide whether to seek new funding from the community or pursue even deeper reductions. We would need guidance on the direction from the board on which one to proceed, so we could recommend a reduction plan for approval moving forward.
Is that the end? No more pages?
That's it.
Okay. All right, thank you guys for that hard information. Does anybody want to start for our board or have any comments? Or do you want me to start or? So it sounds like we're looking to see whether we would be putting a levy on.
Yeah, so the emergency of this is because on December 10th is when we would need to put a resolution on the ballot if we wanted to go for, for May. So that's why there's like a time crunch. Obviously, whatever direction you decide to go, we will do. But we would need to know sooner than later because we would need to get all the paperwork written up for the resolution for December 10th.
And you did, and how much would the new? And you did, and how much would the new levy need to be?
So currently, we would have to put an 11.9 mil levy on if we went in May.
Oh, okay. And what was our last one, four?
4.9.
4.9.
Okay, so more than double.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I can start with my thoughts. I think we're in a horrible situation, no fault of our own, but due to the funding of the state and the county, you know, we're in this position that we're fixed, we're faced with a deficit in our future. I do believe our schools are excellent stewards of our monies. I completely believe that. I think that our programs, our staff, our administrators, I think they're, you know, like no other. So I think this is, you know, very disappointing. But I also feel that the community has spoken for the past two levies that we went out to them. So I don't feel that if we cannot pass the 4.9 levy at this point, we're going to be able to pass an 11.9. Or, I don't know if it's exactly 11.9.
It wasn't, yeah.
So my personal opinion is, I don't feel comfortable putting a resolution to put a levy on in May before we make said cuts, whatever, we need to determine what those are.
Mm-hmm.
I think the community wants to see that. Comments that I have gotten back was, was they, you know, they weren't supporting our levy at this point. They needed to, you know, with property taxes increasing and it wasn't the time. And so I feel like May is too soon after them saying no two times in a row. Those are my thoughts.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
For me?
Oh, thank you. I think being here for my second time, because I've been through this before with everyone here, I have to say that I really would have to commend all of our staff, administrators. I think that everyone does a great job. I think that they go above and beyond. I've seen everyone go that extra mile. I mean, really, I say that from the bottom of my heart, and then my heart goes out to everyone here, because I don't like being here. I've had some really sleepless nights thinking about having to be here again, from the bottom of my heart. I would have to say that when you start talking millage rate and when you start talking just what it means when the values go up, I've lived that for 20, 23 years working in the auditor's office, and I've had so many districts that have had to go through this, and I've watched that for 23 years, so I know that it's not easy at all. And I would really have to say that I've listened to the seniors, and I know that it's very difficult. I've heard them say how difficult it is to pay those taxes, and now just the seniors are getting that relief. That's, that's, that homestead is just speaking to the seniors that are paying the taxes. It's not speaking to everyone. So I know that that brings some relief, but not to all of the homeowners, so I take that into consideration as well. And I, I think that the consensus is that we've won out twice, and we've been rejected twice. So I, I really don't believe that if we were to go back out again right now, that they're going to support us at this time. I don't believe that they're gonna support us. I don't know if you can hear me. I feel like there, that it would be too soon. I feel that they want to see some action on our end. I believe that that's what they're looking for. As a matter of fact, that's what I'm hearing, that's what they're saying to me. So I don't believe that we would get their support if we go back again in May. I just don't believe that they're gonna support us, because they haven't supported us the last two times. So I can't, I can't, I can't support that going back on now.
Anyone else?
I have to the same sentiment. It's not a good place to be, but being told no twice in 2025, and now asking for double what we asked for just this month, I just don't see it passing. I see it getting just demolished, saying, why are you doubling it now? People aren't going to understand all the stuff that's happening, the state levy and emergency levy versus a fixed thing. Like, I mean, they want to see something done before we come back to them for new money.
I have to agree with everything that's been said. I don't know what we're gonna do. 11.9 is, is one big jump from four, 4.5?
4.9.
4.9.
And now there's a petition out there to get rid of all property taxes, and if that passes, I don't know what happens to anybody, the city, the police, the fire. It's gonna be a mess. The state has to do something. I have to agree, we, we can't do 11.9 now. We've gotta do some cuts.
Colleen, could you, could you explain one more time, because to anybody just hearing that that's, that's so dramatic?
Mm-hmm.
4.9 to 11.9 in, in a matter of months?
Right.
From November to springtime, it's, it might be hard for everyone to understand.
The, the main ones that come out are, when we did the 4.9 one, this is prior to knowing that the county commissioners were gonna cut the 1.5 million. So right off the bat, we were already, we were short. We decided 4.9 and put the resolutions on in the summer, and it was three weeks before the election, there was no way we could change what was already done. So that, that's one reason why that it went up. Another reason why that it went up was because we can no longer do the same levy that we were planning on doing, which is the emergency levy. We would have to do a fixed-sum levy because they took away the emergency levy. So then we have to kind of factor in the reduction, 920 factor, of even though you ask for this much, that would be the vote in millage, but they changed it to effective millage, and they roll it back. So when, to try to offset that, that's why they asked us a little bit more. And then also because we dipped into our reserves, so to try to build those back up.
Okay. What is that practically? What does that mean, 11.9 versus 4.9? Probably over $100,000.
It's like $38 for a $100,000 home.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I wanna say it was, it was just under $35, yes, 34.
For a $100,000 home.
Correct, yes.
A month.
Additional, a month.
Yes.
It was 14 with the 4.9, and with the 11.9, I believe it's just under 35.
Yes.
So it's like $20, $21 a month.
More.
More than, yeah, yes.
Right, right. Right.
Okay, so, anything else?
Yeah, what I hear for right now, and I'm assuming one says it too, but there's also four of them that said it, I'm hearing that no levy will be placed on the ballot coming up, and that we are going to work to do a $9 million reduction, and then that will come back in here and, and lay that out.
Yes.
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 But we're talking in the fall.
So the timeline, I'm sure, knowing all of you sitting there want to know the timeline, we will start working on looking and getting input, and then it would be our hope to do it as soon as we can after the first of the year, to let people know as much as possible. We would bring those recommendations to the board on what the suggested reductions are. I want to assure you, it'll be done with, as I said, integrity and heart, and really looking at alternatives to try to do the least amount we can to, you know, meet that 9 million. It's never easy. We did the 6 million back, gosh, it must be about 15, I think it was 2010, 11, somewhere in that range, and it was, yeah, 12?
12, because I came in 13.
Okay.
So you did it in 12.
That was difficult. And what I would, the advice I would give to all of you is to write your legislators and make them aware of what's going on. It is a problem that only they can fix. And I'm being honest with that. Something has to happen to fund schools a different way. They do have the fair, I'm gonna say a few things, I'm sorry, the Fair School Funding Plan, but understand, they aren't funding it for what it costs now to educate a student. They're funding it for what it cost in 2022. And I think all of us have experienced, whether it be at the grocery store, the gas pump, or wherever, that what we paid in 2022 isn't what we're paying right now. So if they want to do the right thing in Columbus, they're, they're funding the fair school funding, as, as Colleen has taught me over the years, but they're doing it at a level that isn't 2025, and what it costs to educate a student. So please, write your legislators and let them know how you feel, or call. We've called. But.
Colleen?
Yes.
Have we seen our expenses tracking over that period of time, several five years? Have we seen them pacing with inflation, exceeding inflation, or slightly under inflation? What have we seen?
Our expenses are in line with inflation. That's not the, the problem. The problem is the funding that comes in is not, is not keeping up with the inflation.
It doesn't couple with the inflation.
Right.
Okay. Any more comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, so, moving on, while the meeting minutes have been posted, do we have a motion to approve the board minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions? If no questions, Colleen, please call the roll.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Garstorfen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Board of Education items, we do not have any. Treasurer action items.
To accept the financial report for the month of October 2025 with the bank statements, reconciliation, and investment reports attached, and to also acknowledge and express all the following donations, I apologize, I'm not gonna read them all, but they are very important to us, and I thank you very much for all the following donations.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the treasurer action items as presented?
Some more.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Does anyone have questions? If no questions, Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Garstorfen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye, motion carries. Do we have treasurer other?
I have no other and no report.
Okay, moving on then to superintendent, action items.
Thank you. First of all, to approve the contract with Kelo Service Agreement for the education of students as detailed in the enclosure. Also, to approve the home instruction tutor at the tutor hourly rate as listed below. You'll see this athletic overnight field trips. Just want to point out one thing, the all OHSAA-sponsored tournaments. The reason we kind of do a blanket one is because, as you know, in tournaments, you could win a day and have to play two days later in the next round, and we don't always have a board meeting in between that to put on, so we kind of do this just to get your approval. And that concludes my action items.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's action items?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Ms. Garstorfen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye, motion carries. Personnel superintendent action items.
Thank you. First of all, to approve the retirement of the following certified staff. Ken Fennick, who has been with the district for 35 years. So thank you, Ken. We wish you well in retirement, and thank you for your wonderful years of service. Beth Gowan, I think Beth is here, in the back. She is our recementer and teaches at Eastern Heights. She has been in the district, I think, 32 years, as I have it, but thank you, Beth. I went to junior high with Beth way back in the day, so that'll tell you how old I am, too. And then John Wallace, who I also saw in the audience. Thank you, John, social studies teacher at Alaria High and a coach. He has been with the district for 26 years.
28.
28, see, I said that, Shane. Where are you? 20, I said, I thought it was 28, but we had 26, but we'll give you 28. That's up to STRS, right? Also, to approve the appointment of the classified staff as described below. To approve the resignation of the following classified staff as described below. To approve the appointment of two more daily subs. To approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following classified staff members. To approve the following athletic supplemental contracts for district-certified or classified staff or non-district coaches. And that concludes my personnel action items.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel action items?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. If no questions, please call the roll.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Garstorfen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, moving along, do you have a superintendent report?
Real short here. First of all, I wanted to say, congratulations, we haven't had a board meeting since, but went to the outsiders at the high school. The things I'm listing here, these are the things that, that helped make Alaria so special, and got to see a wonderful group of high schooler, high school thespians, I guess is the word for it, and they did a fabulous job. It was really entertaining, and Mr. Graves and his whole team did a fabulous job. Also, went to the honors assembly. We had over 600 students at the high school that received from merit roll to honor to high honor, and it was wonderful to see. And I know, I thought I saw Ms. Johnson, she did a great job, and, and we also had a student that won the Princeton Book Award that was announced at the honors award, Zoe Poehl, so congratulations, and wonderful job to all those high schoolers. I, Monday night, I was in Columbus for a meeting, but Monday night, I know we had several of our cabinet representatives at the National Honor Society inductions, and they said it was wonderful, and congratulations to those students that are in National Honor Society. This coming weekend, one of my favorite show, movies, Sister Act, is being put on by Eastern Heights Middle School, 7:30 on Friday and Saturday at the high school, some musical, if you'd like to go. I'm sure it'll be wonderful as always, and look forward to seeing that. And I think the winter sports are starting to be in high gear and all the concerts. I know the weekend of, I want to say December 12th, is the music extravaganza for band, orchestra, and choir, and then we also have a bunch of the school-based, you know, holiday concerts, I'll say. So thank you, everyone who's involved, again, making this such a special district, and our talented kids and, and teachers and staff.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anybody wanting to speak on a board item, or have any comments? Okay, moving on then, no executive session? Okay, then we will wrap, we will move to.
I'll make that motion.
Join the meeting.
Second.
All right, Mr. Gebhardt?
Beat me to it.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Garstorfen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye, motion carries, meeting adjourned.